I'd like to have everyone's attention please and I'd like to call this a regularly scheduled meeting and Billy's posted the meeting of the Harlingen City Commission to order. And this time I'd like to call upon Commissioner Gilhorn to lead us in our invocation.
Your Heavenly Father, we come before you today to give you honor and praise. We recognize that you are the source of all that is good and you are the source of all our blessings. Thank you for the gifts of this life that you have bestowed upon us. We thank you for the freedom and opportunity to gather together this day. We ask for your blessings upon this meeting. We ask that you would guide and direct our meeting so that it is full of wisdom, productivity, and respect for one another. Thank you for helping to guide our work on behalf of our neighbors and our community. In your name we pray.
Amen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This time I'd like to go to item one, which is the first item, is public announcement of events. And it's our Public Information Officer who's new on board, so welcome aboard, Dave Ralph. We're excited about having this position filled and what you can do for our city in communicating what's going on in Harlingen.
Well, thank you very much, and I'm definitely looking forward to not only serving the city government, but our citizens as well, sir. Thank you. To get right to the business, on January 20th, there will be the 10th Annual Winter Texan Appreciation Festival, which I'm sure will include more than just winter Texans. It'll be at the Casa de Amistad at Fair Park. There'll be business vendors, line dancing, a live band, Wildcat Thicket, also mariachi by Mariachi Sol Azteca, a new quilt show, a new classic car show, and also some artisans from Mexico will be there. So we'll look forward to that from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. on the 20th of January. Also among upcoming events, as we look to the new year, there'll be Saturday, January 25th, this is South Texas Sizzler 5K, 10K, especially for those of us that may be a little calorie conscious after the holidays and getting into our New Year's resolutions. Saturday, February 8th, will be the Congenital Heart Defect Awareness Festival at Long C Hill Fair Park. The time on that one will be announced later. We will probably be posting these on the city website soon, so stay tuned. On Saturday, February 22nd, there'll be the 24th Annual Jalapeno 100 Bike Tour, which is a big time annual event that draws people from all over the region and the state with a wide variety of entertainment. I'm sure that'll be on your calendar for a while yet. And then Sunday, February 23rd, there'll be the 2nd Annual Ms. South Texas Senior Pageant at the Harlingen Municipal Auditorium from 2:00 to 5:30. So we'll look forward to plenty of fun type events coming to our city soon. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next item is a special presentation to the family of late Mayor Richard Rodriguez. And this time I'd like to ask Manny Vela and Rick the Des, when they come forward, and also the family of Mayor Rodriguez, Sonia, my Gabriella, and this is somebody else who should come forward. This is a solemn occasion, but it's also an occasion for us to recognize the tremendous amount of service that the late Mayor Richard Rodriguez gave to our community over a long period of time. Six years on the City Commission, three years as mayor, another three years on the Harlingen Economic Development Corporation, and many other opportunities that he gave to our community to serve. And we want to, it's been a tradition for the city to present to the family of our departed commissioners and mayor, a flag which is flown over City Hall as an honor for their sacrifice and the service of the commissioner or the mayor who served the community faithfully. And so we want to take this occasion to present this flag to Sonia to accept it on behalf of the family. I've asked Manny and Rick to join me in this presentation because they served with the mayor. Manny was appointed to the Harlingen Utility Board and then to the Valley International Airport Board by the mayor, and also Rick was appointed by the mayor to the Harlingen Airport Board and probably lots of other things. But they served faithfully with him, and I'd like this time to call on Manny to put yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Certainly on behalf of the Rodriguez and Saliva family, we'd like to thank you and the commission and all folks associated with the city for this honor, for Rick and his legacy tonight. You know, we loved Rick for many, many reasons, and one of the reasons that we respected him so highly was the desire to serve our communities. And you've outlined for us and highlighted his years of service here in Harlingen. And quite honestly, in just literally thousands of conversations with him, he was driven such, just like you guys are on a daily basis, to make our community better. And I think at the end of the day, with total confidence, I can say that he absolutely made Harlingen a better place for all of us. And that's his legacy, is his legacy of service. Of course, he also has an incredible legacy of family. For those of y'all who knew Rick, knew that he really was an exemplary husband, father, son-in-law, brother, uncle, et cetera. He just always put family first, and quite honestly, that's probably the most important characteristic we can all have, is when we do that and we pay attention to those that are around us, but also make time, just as you guys do, on a weekly, daily basis to make sure our community is better today than it was yesterday. So once again, we can't thank you enough. Personally, we can't thank you enough for the effort this afternoon. We certainly, I certainly believe the credit is due. I certainly believe the honor is given, and I know Sonia and the family are incredibly touched by the gesture. So thank y'all each very, very much.
And this is a visible symbol of the city's appreciation for all the years of service that Rick gave to us, and I acknowledge what a great contribution and legacy he has left for all of us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Scratch you with family. Family. Thank you.
Now, I would like to make a special presentation and acknowledgement to the Texas National Guard for their participation in Operation Crackdown. And as I call your names, if you could stand up, stand over here and face that direction because this guy is gonna want to take your picture as we were saying for the flag. I don't see Captain Samantha Martinez here. Master Sergeant Robert Hughes. And Master Sergeant Marcus Wilkins. Staff Sergeant CJ White. Is that right? Did I get that right, Staff Sergeant? Staff Sergeant Namon Tatro. Sergeant Chris Stone. And I don't know if it means Elton Groves. We wanted to bring you guys out and thank you on behalf of the entire Harlingen City Commission, on behalf of the entire city of Harlingen for all the hard work that you've been doing here in our city for the last two weeks. For those of you who are not familiar with the program, the Texas National Guard in Operation Crackdown has been working in our city for the last two weeks to demolish dilapidated, unsafe structures and also structures that are known attractions for criminal activity like gang hideouts, drug use. And what they're doing, what they have done for our community is to help our community be safer, our neighborhoods to be safer and more secure because they're eliminating those unsafe structures and those magnets for this criminal activity that we know goes on in there. When we were out there on Monday for the media day, the house they knocked down, definite signs of tagging by gangs on the interior of that house, almost all of these houses have that kind of physical symbol, and so we know that bad things are going on in these structures. And by them coming into our community and helping us eliminate these bad places, these lights in our community, they've done an incredible amount of service to improve the welfare of all of our citizens. And so we want to express our deepest appreciation to you for taking your time away with your bangles to be here in our community. This is a joint project with the city of Harlingen and our police department, who've done a great job of identifying where we need to go along with our code enforcement folks who do an outstanding job for us every day. But you're here today to receive this recognition, and we just want to thank you from the bottom of our hearts. Anything you'd all would like to say? Thanks for the opportunity. All right, well, Merry Christmas. I'm gonna get in here and take a picture with you.
Mayor, as you're taking pictures, I'm gonna run down some of the pictures of some of the structures that they've demolished.
Yeah, 30, yeah, right, 30 today, right? Tomorrow you'll do 30. Yeah, Carlos, go ahead.
These are some of the pictures, some of the before and after pictures of some of the structures that they demolished during this two-week mission? And you're gonna see some of the before and after, you know, some of the, really all the houses were in bad shape and there were known hangouts for gang activity and drug activities. So just like the mayor said, we're much better off having them here. They're very highly trained individuals with their expertise, and you know, they do their job very well. They're making our neighborhood safer and drug-free, and they're directly impacting the community. You can see that we had Media Day this week, and we had Sam Houston, the fifth graders after, and it's impacting their neighborhoods. Up to now, we've done, since 2010, we have done 224 structures. In 2011, the National Guard did 24, 2012, the Texas National Guard did 31, and 2013, we have done 22 as of a couple of days, and so now we've done eight more, and by tomorrow we'll do one more. We're a total of 31 in 2013, so we're very thankful for what they do.
Item number two is approval of the minutes for the December 4th, 2013 regular meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
I had a question. Under citizen communication, Joe Rubio got up and spoke to the outgoing Chief of Police, and I thought that what he had said was he was complimenting him on a budget decrease with regard to overtime, not an increase.
That's what I heard also.
I think Joe's left, hadn't he? Oh, there he is.
That's correct.
It was, you complimented him on a decrease in the overtime rate?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for catching.
Okay, well, with that correction, are there any other additions or corrections to the minutes? With that correction, is there a motion approved?
Second.
All who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like, sign. Motion carries. Consent agenda.
Item 3A, B, and C, is there a motion to adopt a consent agenda? I'll make a motion to adopt this consent agenda, items A, B, and C. Second.
All who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like, sign. Motion carries. Item 4, consider to take action to approve an amendment to the ordinance, Chapter 51, to establish a maximum annual increase of rate for the use of reclaimed water. Darrell?
Thank you. Arriving here, I had, thanks for this opportunity. I had five different individuals tell me to keep this brief. So I'm taking a hint. Approximately two years ago, I was approached by an investor, a company called Harlenau Ventures to, they're doing feasibility study about the ability of building a power plant here, and that if we had effluent available for cooling water, that response was yes, we did. At that time, we were only using about half a million gallons a day for irrigation purposes under, without any obligation, under no contract requirements, and therefore there was no fee. There's no fee established for that, and there's no charge for the current irrigation water to the soccer complex or galphores or other uses. So that, at that time, they proceeded their feasibility study and then requested could there be a contractual obligation to commit all of the water to them at an established rate. There was no established rate for that, and according to charter, only the city commission can establish rates. Historically, Water Works has negotiated contracts in the past that had some charges for various services and for wholesale water and so forth. But we felt like it was important to stay in compliance with the charter that, again, the city commission to establish rates. So shortly, ordinance was, amendments was adopted in January of 2012, was established a rate of five cents per thousand gallons for effluent or reused water. That was, everybody's happy. We're now negotiating the last two years for quite a very extensive agreement with a lot of conditions for water quality standards, et cetera, et cetera. There's now been a proposal or a request that, because this will be a long-term contract, that a maximum allowable increase per year be provided, and that at 2% per year. That has been interpreted also, again, as establishing a future rate. So that's a rate, and that's the only thing that only the city commission can approve that. So what is proposed this evening is an amendment to the ordinance that was adopted in 2012 that established the five cent to cap it at a 2% increase per year. Again, that is, without that, we don't have the ability to enter into a contract with them at their requested, at their requested way. Would you go into litany of details and discussions about this? If we had time, we could have a work session on this because this is a big project, and there are a lot of massive details in the contractual arrangement for the, I said, water quality issues and so forth. But the bottom line is that they're asking the city to commit almost the entire amount of effluent available for the next 30 years. And that's why we thought, you know, the charge was important to, because there will be a contractual arrangement, and we have to guarantee to furnish that water. There was a, the other alternative in doing to this is going to having the commission actually approve and review the entire contract if that meets a legal standard to, but as far as, all of our current rates are established by ordinance, and that's the reason we submitted this as an ordinance revision in 2012.
And I'm gonna add that there is no ordinance here tonight to adopt, so it's a discussion. They presented the commission with proposed changes, so if you have this discussion, but if we're gonna create an ordinance, I assume that's what you want to find out tonight?
Yes.
Therefore, they stand, and then you're gonna come back with a proposed ordinance to adopt?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
After I reviewed this document provided by Water Works, which I'm 100% in favor of doing exactly what they want to do, but it seems to me a better way to handle it rather than to sort of codify it into our ordinance, this special rate that we're gonna deal with the power plant, would be just to bless the rate that they put in the contract rather than change the ordinance and have this 2% cap per year in our ordinance when we're just dealing with one specific entity, if that would work.
Joe, I want to ask you, we got a potential industrial customer that they want to buy the water, right?
Yes, sir.
For 30 years.
Yes, sir.
Why do we have to charge to the community some money when we're gonna make money with this company or who made the decisions or, we don't see anything on this paper over here. Who gets to set the cost of recycled water?
Well, historically, there is a charge for that product. Currently, now Edinburgh furnishes effluent to a power plant at five cents per thousand gallons. McAllen furnishes water effluent, treated effluent to a power plant at 20 cents, but they also have costs. They do the pumping and do the portions to it. But the concern, my personal concern is currently, right now, the water has minimal value because we're releasing it into the Arroyo, Colorado. In 20 years, it could have substantial value because of the change of, because of the drought, because of the shortages of water statewide, and the water plant, the state water plant is going to be looking quite extensively at the use of wastewater effluent throughout the state. But I hope I answered your question. You're saying, why are we charging for the water?
Yeah, why would we have to charge the community for the water? We charged it already to, the water getting in there.
Yes, sir.
The houses. Now, we have to charge these people to throw the water away, and when we're gonna sell this water to the company? And I don't see any name of the company or anything on this.
No, sir, this is not a contract.
No samples on the, on the, on the, also the cost of the 2%?
Correct.
These are charges to the company, not to the, not to our customers, not to our individual customers. These are, these would be charges to the one customer, the company. They would pay for the effluent.
So we're charged to the, 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 the,
And right now, this proposal that I'm looking at here, this is not even in the ordinance, right? Now, there is no effluent charge at all right now?
Yes, it was, it was approved in, in January of 2012, the five cents, but not the, the limit of increase of 2% per year.
Mr. Yulhorn, what you're asking is that rather than put in the ordinance, we put into their contract the 2%?
I just would leave the ordinance alone, and then I would do whatever contract we're going to do with this company, and then I would approve that rate. That way, we're not tied in. The way this is sort of written is, is anybody that came along, of course, you could change it, but would come along, would be tied to this five cents with a maximum 2% cap, and you'd want to be free, 10 years, we may want to do a different deal with somebody else.
Okay, now, by, by ordinance, are you allowed to do that? Because I know there was some controversy at one point.
If we approve the rate?
Well, the charter, all we're trying to do is comply with the charter, and that's a, that's counsel.
Does the charter allow you to negotiate a rate and guarantee it for 20 years?
The charter establishes that only the city commission can establish rates. The board of trustees of the Waterworks cannot. So therefore, and historically, all the rates have been established by ordinance.
But I'm trying, I'm trying to answer, and get my mind, I agree with what Tudor's saying is, is that we should put it into the contract, that we were not bound on this, but the problem that I'm going to have with that, this is the charter.
Well, it's already at five cents in here in the charter.
But he's not allowed to...
In the ordinance, not, not charter.
I mean, in the ordinance.
In the ordinance, he, the ordinance doesn't allow him to guarantee there's no more than a 2% increase to that one client.
We would bless the contract, and that would be it.
But I thought you had, I thought the ordinance had to set the rate.
Correct.
We have to have an ordinance to set the rate.
That's what I understood. That's why I'm asking the question.
I haven't analyzed that part of it because we, Darryl and I haven't discussed it at this point.
Okay, well, is it fair to say that we're, that we're supportive of the change as recommended by the general manager of Harlingen Waterworks, and that we'll just ask the staff then to go create, come back and have our city attorney make a recommendation on, is this, is this time sensitive? Can it wait until the next meeting?
We've been negotiating this for two years, and the, and the, the client's eyes or the developer's eyes, yes, they want this as soon as possible, but it's, it's been in process for two years too. So, no, I think we have time to negotiate. If we want to do a contract, if we want to present the contract to you for approval, or if we want to submit an ordinance revision to you for approval?
Well, I mean, I don't, I don't know, and I defer to Rick on this, but I, I thought that the, that we had to have an ordinance that, I thought the ordinance has to bless all these rates, and if there's going to be a different rate for the effluent, it's going to be in the ordinance.
Well, basically, all we're doing is capping the increase. They're starting off with the nickel that's in the ordinance already.
I mean, I understand, you know, cleaner maybe is leaving the contract, but I'm afraid that, I don't know, there would be some conflict between the ordinance and the contract, that that could cause some problems. So, we'll have to ask.
Okay, I think if I understand what Mr. Yulhorn is saying is, can we do something general in the ordinance and then allow them to put the specifics in the, in the contract so that they can modify rates, negotiate other rates, but, but I'm going to have to examine, we may be by charter or ordinance required to actually put the rates in an amendment to the ordinance.
The rate is already in the ordinance at five cents, and all we would be doing is saying, give it an assurance to this company that we're not going to raise it by 1,000% once you spend $750 million building your plant.
Correct.
So, but if they need assurances that we're not going to raise the rate.
But you're saying this, this isn't an ordinance because it doesn't have all the magic language, it doesn't have a caption, or being an act, it would be an amendment to the ordinance.
Correct. In the interest of time, I wanted to get this over here to start this discussion, because I knew, I knew there would be a lot of discussion.
Is there, I, I saw some other stuff here on wastewater also. Is there, is that also part of this?
Well, that, basically, what you see is the, the amendment to the ordinance that was approved in 2012 with just that 2% language added. So, there, because of the, the sections or the paragraphs also morphed into some wastewater things, but those didn't change. There's a lot of things in that, in that package that...
The only thing that actually changed is that 2%.
The 2% is the only thing that needs to be changed too.
Why it has to be for 30 years? I mean, did you get a bid on that, or this?
This, this is the request of the developer because they're going to invest this, a lot of money in this project and for to get their investors to do it.
Is there any reason why we can't talk about the developer? I think everybody knows who it is.
No, I'm sure we can. It's a Lapa Longa.
The Lapa Longa Energy Plant, they're going to invest at least half a billion dollars in building an energy plant. So, if you're going to invest that much money, it's something, it's like buying a house, you want to make sure you have enough time to recoup your investment, and they think it'll take 30 years.
You know, I understand the five cents, I don't have a problem with it because this is water that we're already taking care of, we're already treating it, we're already, we're not creating a special revenue, a special stream just for them, this is the same water we're going to dump into the Arroyo. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
And, and we're currently taking some of that water, diverting it for Ramsey and...
Soccer Complex and Treasure Hills Golf Course.
What happens to that, that requirement, or is that just kind of like, just a little dimple?
Well, there's only about half a million gallons a day that's currently now used for reuse for irrigation purposes.
Yes.
But since we do not charge for that, there's no contractual obligation for that. So, what Lapa Longa is saying is that we have to guarantee their volume first, and if there's not enough for irrigation purposes, then it's...
But they, the bottom line is, they need the, they need this water, or they won't be able for the next 30 years, or they're not going to make the investment, they're not going to employ all these people, and they're not going to build this power plant here. So, we, we have to work with them to, and you all have negotiated this contract for two years, you're in place, and you feel comfortable making this recommendation.
Oh, yes, sir, yes, sir.
Then I would, why don't, can we have a motion to instruct the staff to either create, either prepare an amendment to the ordinance or bring us back to contract, whichever is...
We can bring both.
Right. Whichever the city attorney recommends. That way, you'd have some assurance that we're going to, that we're going to move forward with it, and they'll just bring back whichever vehicle makes the most sense, and...
Right. I'll second.
I'd like, I'd like to see that on paper, more in specific on the...
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank, thank.
I made the motion that we allow staff to...
Okay, and push your order number two. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like, sign.
Thank you.
I'm told that we're not going to be ready tonight for items five or six, so we'll just pass those two items, and then go to item seven, public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading to abandon, accept the bid, and authorize the mayor to issue a quick claim deed on a 60-foot right-of-way with a 2014 acre tract out of a 60-foot right-of-way dedicated to the city of Harlingen by the recorded plan of Harlingen-Dale Heights subdivision number two, located on the north side of East Harrison Avenue, Plagueville, Plagueville Streets, African Marriett Plaza.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. The applicant is requesting abandonment of a 60-foot wide right-of-way to allow for additional parking for proposed commercial property she's proposing to purchase. As you can see, this is the existing right-of-way, 60 feet wide and 105 feet in length. This is an area view of the property. This is the property, as you can see, it's, the right-of-way is currently not in use and is surrounded to the north by residential lots, and then, of course, to east and west by commercial lots. This request was reviewed by the city engineer, and the city engineer has no objections to the abandonment request. The appropriate utility companies also reviewed the request and have no objections. However, Harlingen Waterworks and AEP are requesting a 20-foot water line and electrical easement on the west side of the property, which is the, this side of this right-of-way. This right-of-way, or this right-of-way was processed through the bidding process. Three bids were submitted and were open on December the 13th. The applicant was the highest bidder at $6,000. Staff is recommending approval subject to the applicant purchasing the right-of-way at the bid approved by the commission, as well as dedicating a 20-foot electrical and water line easement on the west side of the property. I'd also like to clarify on the ordinance that you have before you, that one of the conditions states that the applicant would have to dedicate a 20-foot utility easement, but it should state 20-foot water line and electrical easement. I'll take any questions, and the applicant is also proposing for questions.
Is, is she bound to make that into a parking lot in a certain period of time?
Uh, no, she's not.
So, the pretense is, is it was to be a parking lot, but if they decide to build something on it, she would be free to do that?
If she were to build on it, she'd have to submit like that property to build on it, because it's really a right-of-way, this is the, the original plant, and as you can see, this is the right-of-way that was dedicated back in 1953. All these lots are about 25 by 105, and this is a 60-foot right-of-way.
Did the other adjacent property owner bid?
Uh, no, he did not.
Can we go to item A, which is a public hearing, go to the public hearing, is there anyone that would like to speak for or against this ordinance? Hearing no one, our closest public hearing, go to item B, which is to consider and take action to approve an ordinance on first reading to abandon, accept the bid, and authorize the mayor to issue a quick claim deed. With the vote described, I ask the city attorney to read the caption.
An ordinance abandoning and authorizing the mayor to execute a special warranty deed, I believe that should be a quick claim deed. Well, isn't that supposed to be a quick, it says special warranty, but it's supposed to be a quick claim deed.
Yes, it should be a quick claim deed.
On a 60-foot wide right-of-way described as a 0.14 acre tract out of the 60-foot right-of-way dedicated to the city of Harlingen by the recorded plan, Harlingen-Dale Heights subdivision number two, located on the north side of East Harrison Avenue, between 21st and 25th Streets, subject to the applicant purchasing the right-of-way at the approved bid and dedicating a 20-foot utility easement and water line?
It should be a water line and electrical easement.
Water line easement?
Water line and electrical.
And electrical easement on the west side of the property. And with those, I guess he's asking for approval, subject to those changes, were correct for the second reading?
Clean it up for the second reading. Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance on first reading?
So moved.
Is there a second? Is there any other discussion? All those?
Yeah, I don't have any, I think, I think they answered my question.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like, sign. Motion carries. Item eight, I'm told the staff is not prepared to go forward with item eight tonight, so we're going to pass item eight, which is that change order to Brazil and T Road. Item nine is considered to take action to accept or reject bids for purchase of one new aluminum transport tailor, trailer, bid number 2014-05.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. We received two bids for a new transfer trailer. Staff is recommending that we accept the low bid submitted by Travis Body and Trailer in the amount of $66,600. This amount is budgeted and within budget.
Just as part of your transfer scale?
For the transfer trailer, yeah.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve this purchase.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? And that's to accept the bid, staff's recommendation, and award the bid.
Bid's reported, 2014-05.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, item 10, consider to take action to amend the facility rental rates, policies pertaining to Casa de Amistad located at the Boulevard, Harlingen, Texas, 755.
Mayor, Commissioner, before we get into, into the item, I want to just thank Commissioner Leal and Commissioner Sanchez for bringing this to our attention. David, we've been working on decisions of, over the past six months, and so, we're happy, while we're proposing a decrease in the, in the rates, we're hoping that we'll actually have an increase in the revenue by having more functions at the event, and, will be, if that will be able to explain what the proposed changes are.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. We were asked by the city commission to review the price structures for the rental of Casa de Amistad specifically, in an attempt to decrease the financial burden on Harlingen residents for the rental of the facility, and also to review the internal policies pertaining to the required police presence for functions where alcohol is served. In the process, we looked really closely at costs directly related to the events, excluding any expenses that were relating to ongoing facility maintenance, capital improvements, or personnel costs. We also met with the city commissioners to gather their input on revising the ordinance, and I also would like to thank Commissioner Leal and Commissioner Sanchez for their time and input on this as well. We believe that we've arrived at a scenario that will speak to the concerns of the commission, make the rental for the facility more affordable for private Harlingen residents, and still be mindful of our department's bottom line. Prior to the proposed adjustments for the rental rates for, for, to these adjustments, the rental rates for the facility were already over 50% below the market average for comparable facilities. If implemented, the new rate for Harlingen citizens would be less than a third of what the market average is for, for comparable facilities. I will call your attention to the, the first sheet that I handed you in the document that I just passed out to you. And this, what this is, is this is a one sheet that highlights the, the specific changes that we're proposing. Currently, the rental rate for the, for a private Harlingen resident is 1,300. We're proposing a 22% reduction to that rate, which would drop that rate to $1,015. The non-residential private rate would remain where it is at 1,450, as would the commercial rate. We are also recommending that we increase the refundable security deposit from 200 to 500, since we're going to be bringing in less money to, to deal with possible damages and that sort of thing. We feel like that we need to increase that security deposit, but it does merit being pointed out that, that is an entirely refundable rate, provided that there is nothing damaged, provided they don't go over on their time, they're going to get all of that money back at the end of the deal. We also, in looking at the ordinance, realized that there wasn't anything in the ordinance that, that informed the public that they would be subject to TABC requirements when they had an event there in, in Casa de Amistad, and so, we put language in there, basically just letting them know that they are subject to TABC requirements. There was no definition of a commercial event in the ordinance, and so, we took the time to, to come up with a definition of that. A commercial event shall be defined as any event conducted for the purpose of commerce, including but not limited to events that charge a fee for admission and events where goods and/or services are outsold or exchanged. We are recommending that we waive the police requirements for commercial events that offer a cocktail hour, a networking session, or a reception prior to or following the actual event. We are eliminating some of the ancillary fees that have been charged to private citizens in the past, and one of those fees that we're eliminating is the rental fee for the stage there in Casa de Amistad. For commercial events, however, we are recommending that that rental fee go from $50 to $100 for rental of that stage. The additional ancillary fees for, that will be implemented for commercial events, these do not pertain to the private citizen, our, our private residents, but to, for commercial events, the stage will increase to $100. Round tables for $5 per table with eight chairs included with every round table that they rent. Internet, there is time that the MIS department has to come over, and they have to put in codes and set that up when people use internet in the building. So, there will be a $50 charge, which is enough to cover two hours of one of our MIS techs time. Chairs, in the event that they required additional chairs, there are events where we'll have tables set up at the front of the building, and then it'll be theatrical seating in the back. Those chairs will be available for 40 cents per chair, and then a sound tie-in of $25, $25 per event. The other thing that we did was we defined, probably wanted to define private and residential rentals, and I'll, I'll hit those really quickly for you. A private event shall be defined as any event conducted by a private individual or citizen that is not conducted for the purpose of commerce and in which no fee is charged for admission, and there is no exchange of goods and services for monetary or in or any other value. The fee for non-residential rentals shall be $1,450. A non-residential rental shall be defined as any rental in which the less see is not a citizen of Harlingen, Texas. Proof of residency must be provided by presenting a copy of utility bill. Basically, if they want to qualify for that Harlingen resident rate, we need to see an electric bill, we need to see something. We would eliminate the use of concession stand fee for private residents, so that the concession stand is there, and they'll be able to use that without there being an additional charge for that. We would reduce the private rental rate for, for Harlingen residents by $285, so that would be an almost $300 decrease. And we would eliminate the nonprofit rate for Casa de Amistad. That would still remain in effect for the auditorium, but frankly, we don't get a lot of nonprofit use out of Casa de Amistad. When there are nonprofit events there, they're generally commercial events, they're either fundraiser, or that, or that sort of thing. The auditorium, on the other hand, you have a lot of nonprofits that come in and use that. You have church services, you have different theatrical companies, you have that sort of thing, and so, we feel like that we could, we could do our best work by leaving that in place for the auditorium, but eliminating it for Casa de Amistad. And those are, those are, in a one-sheet bulletin format, the changes that we're recommending to this ordinance. We feel like that what we would need to do over the next several months, particularly over the remainder of this year, is closely monitor the budgetary impact of this. Watch how this affects our revenue, watch how this affects our bottom line, and come back at the end of the year, and if we feel like there are any changes, then we'll, of course, we'll come back to you with, with those recommended changes as well. But bearing that in mind, we are recommending that we move forward with these proposed revisions.
Joe, I want to say thank you because we've been working for five or six months together to adjust this price for the community.
Well, I appreciate your help.
I, I appreciate that, Gable, Ten Cerna, and Carlos Herrera for, for helping to do this, and this is great. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Does the school district use this building ever?
We are, they have in the past. In the past, the joint use agreement covered them for 22 rentals. We're gonna, we need to watch that this year. They have a new auditorium that's opened up over there. Their use of Casa de Amistad has dwindled quite a bit since we told them they couldn't use it for testing anymore, that it needed to be for like trade show activity and that type of thing. The problem with the, with the joint use agreement in terms of the auditorium in Casa de Amistad was that they, they generated no revenue, and they did generate quite a few expenses. Now that they have their new facility open over there, and the use for Casa, the school district use of Casa de Amistad has, has begun to dwindle, I, I don't believe that at this point, we need to be too hasty in trying to address that joint use, joint use agreement. I really think we ought to get to the end of this fiscal year, see how the lack of those expenses have impacted our budget, and that may be a problem that cures itself, frankly.
I'd like to see us continue to cooperate with them as much as possible.
Exactly.
We need to be building goodwill and friendships with the school district, I think.
And I want to commend you also on this. I like the way that we, we left the other two alone, and then we, we added the extra. You know, one thing we don't want to be doing is competing unfairly with commercial enterprises, so we accomplished that with this.
Well, thank you. And also, we were mindful of Commissioner Yulhorn's input, where he said we didn't want people from Brownsville or McAllen, what have you, driving to Harlingen specifically to rent our buildings because they were cheaper than everybody else's.
We'll gladly have them come and spend their money, plus all the additional expenses.
All right, are you all, are you all satisfied with the changes?
I'm happy with it.
I'll make a motion that we adopt, adopt these changes for the rental fees and policies for Casa de Amistad.
Second. Any other discussion?
You don't have to look that way, right?
All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, like, sign. Motion carries.
Thank you, Joe.
Item 11, consider to take action to approve the action of the Harlingen Housing and Finance Corporation to change its name to the Harlingen and San Benito Housing and Finance Corporation. Is there a motion to approve?
Can I ask a quick question? How were those people appointed?
They are appointed by the mayor and through the city commission.
And even the, the representative from San Benito will be, is approved by our mayor?
No, he's appointed by their governing body.
So, they get one?
Yes.
So, what's on the table is just them officially changing the name from Harlingen to Harlingen slash San Benito.
Correct.
I'll make the motion.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Item 12, consider to take action to authorize the mayor to execute a letter of support to the Rio Grande Water Regional Water Authority for the strategic marketing.
Mayor, Commissioner, the Rio Grande Regional Water Authority is applying for a Valley Strategic Water Management Planning Grant from the Texas Water Development Board, and they're asking for a letter of support from this agency, and the staff is recommending
that we approve this.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion there.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item 13, consider and possible action on awarding a financial advisory service agreement to provide financial and related services to the city.
Mayor, Commissioners, the commission, staff was asked to go out for proposals to solicit financial advisory services. We published a notice in the paper, and then we sent direct emails to 15 financial advisory firms within the state. We received three responses, four responses, sorry. One from Friedman, who's out of a company, was a no bid. The other two that submitted proposals were First Southwest, SWS Group, and Estadio Mosa. Staff, a committee of staff members, which included Elvita Trevino, our finance director, Sebio Viasana, the assistant finance director, Dan Serna, and myself, ranked these proposals, and the highest ranked firm was, came out to be First Southwest. So we're asking the city to allow city manager to negotiate a contract with First Southwest for the provision of financial service, advisory services. This would be for a three-year term with two one-year options. So it could be possibly five years from this.
Okay. Is there a motion to authorize the city manager to negotiate the contract with First Southwest?
And we don't know any reason why the others did not turn in bids, is that correct?
No.
Maybe they weren't familiar, don't have access down here.
Could possibly be, vote. These firms have offices locally, some in McAllen, some in...
Can you, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, no, you're doing fine.
Can we go ahead and let the commission know how the ranking came in, just like the points?
Sure. The point structures were as follows. The total points could be allotted to any one individual company, or 100 points. First Southwest was ranked number 100 with 100 points. SWS Group came in second with 92.5 points, and Estadio Mosa came in third with 90.75 points.
You know, I would, I've been here longer, and I just wanna say that, you know, the level of service and the responsiveness given to the City of Harlingen by First Southwest, I can't imagine any firm ever doing a more, a better job in that area. You know, a lot of, I'm in a service business myself, and I know that sometimes it's just, you know, hard to be responsive, or as responsive as you want, as you want to be, but anytime we need any help with anything, and I mean, it's a really, you know, difficult, challenging issues, spur of the moment issues, you know, we pick up the phone, and Anne Intricant is always there for us, and very responsive, and very, very timely in getting the information to us, and so she has, you know, really been a big help in helping us to be able to craft the financial mechanism necessary to do some of our most important economic development projects, especially in recent years, and they have, they have really been over the backwards to help the City of Harlingen. So, you know, that coupled with just, you know, having the kind of institutional memory that they have about all of the city's financial information, I think is a plus, so I'm glad to see that the rankings turned out this way. Is there a motion?
I'd move that we instruct the city manager to negotiate with First Southwest.
There's a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. And not to take away anything from anybody else who did on this, they're great firms too, and we recognize, but we have this long relationship, and they've demonstrated their value to the city. I'll report to this board appointments.
May I give you the one last?
Yes, you did, and I did mention it to Commissioner Tudor, I did not mention it to Commissioner Paul Masur and Castillo, and I'm here, sorry, I shared with Castillo too, but he's not here.
None?
All right. These are reappointments to the Harlingen Finance Corporation, Larry Galworth, Norma Boland, Michael Boland, and Sam Lozano. Is there a motion to approve the board appointments?
Make that motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Let's see. Do we have any citizen communication?
We have one here, and it's Joe Hugel.
Okay, we'll take item 16 before we go to the executive session.
Okay. Talking about... The record host, Herr Ruiz Jr., went through and has seen the road. Have you noticed tonight that we have effectively killed citizen communication? We've stifled free speech. There's only two people in the audience that are not, that are not, the rest are city staff. This is gonna continue because of the way the citizens are being treated, okay? I would like to see if next year, we, you might wanna turn the clock, because I'll talk all night long. I'd like to see if next year, we start working on an ethics ordinance. The reason being is because some of the board appointees, you know, I've calculated, they were plus a few hundred thousand dollars, that some of these board appointees have received indirectly or directly $2.6 million in city funds. I think it's time that we face the issue of ethics for the city, that there's, if you look up the San Antonio Ethics Ordinance, do a Google search, or give you an idea that the ethics ordinance has now been turned over to a private board. I'd like to see that we work on this. If we're not gonna work on it, I don't get no word, then I'm gonna start a petition drive just on this issue, and I'm gonna publish the numbers, and why, I think is important, because we've spent $2.6 million. Now, tonight also, talking about free speech, we talked about the municipal auditorium, the Casa Mista, and again, you know, no citizen has any input. I didn't know what was going on, I didn't know that there was gonna be some rates change. I think it's important that we involve the citizens in some of this, because a lot of the citizens are no longer using those, those commercial buildings. It also impacts law enforcement. What you did today, I'm curious whether or not you even contacted the law enforcement, the Harlingen Police Department, and decided on this issue. Y'all have a Merry Christmas, and I'll see y'all next year. Thank you.
In a minute, we're gonna go, we're gonna call item 15, which is an executive session, and then after that, there won't be any action taken, there's nothing else on the agenda to take action on, so we're just gonna go, in a minute, we're gonna go back to executive session, talk to our lawyer about an issue, but I, on behalf of, well, I'll let everybody say Merry Christmas on their own, but I wanna wish everybody here a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and everybody have a safe holiday, and we've had a great year here in the City of Harlingen, and we look forward to another, another year, another great year next year. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Item 15, executive session. Subchapter 551, Subchapter D, BTC, Government Code, Section 541.071. Consultation with the city attorney, city legal advisor, during lease agreement with the City of Harlingen, the White Lake Spacewalk Club, for the use of spacewalks. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Section?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're now in executive session.